This evening, we have a very special group of young ladies who will be leading us in the pledge and their color guard. And I welcome some girls from a wide variety of troops in Greenwich who will be leading us in the pledge. So you guys are welcome to come down and start your procession.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Merrick, and I am a fifth grade Girl Scout at North Street School. On March 12th, 1912, Julian Gordon Low registered the first Girl Scout in Savannah, Georgia. In honor of this important date, Greenwich Girl Scouts will perform tonight's color guard. Color guard, prepare to present the colors. Color, color guard, I mean, audience, please rise. Color guard, advance. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, my name is Adelina Ponse, and I can't wait to attend Central Middle School next year. On Sunday, April 7th, Greenwich Girl Scouts and the League of Women Volunteers Greenwich will host our annual Women in Government event at Town Hall. We invite all women in government, B E T, B O E, R T M, town of Greenwich staff to help our youngest constituents learn how to make an impact in our community. This annual expo-style event is free of charge and open to the public. Select Woman Raven and Select Person McWeegan will give tours of Town Hall. And we learned this week that Connecticut Secretary of State Stephanie Thomas will stop by at 2:00 P. M. Please join us. And in case you're wondering, Girl Scout cookies arrive on Saturday. Saturday. Color guard dismiss. Audience, you may be seated. Have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the January 2024 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes from our January meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the January minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. We have a few announcements this meeting, starting with Mr. Jude Collins, who's going to tell us about the parade, I think.
Hello, everyone. So on behalf of the Greenwich Hiberning Association, I'd like to invite you all to march in the 48th St. Patrick's Day Parade. It will be actually on St. Patrick's Day, which is this Sunday, March 17th. It starts at 2:00. Um, all RTM members are encouraged to, uh, to march. There will be a shuttle that will bring, um, bring you from the, uh, beach parking lot up to Town Hall. You should be there at 1:30 at the latest. Uh, the road will close at 1:45. So if you're having someone drop you off, you need to be there by 1:45 at the latest. Parade starts at 2:00. It'll go all the way down Greenwich Avenue. This year, because of St. Patrick's Day, we're expecting a large crowd. We ordered more porta potties. Uh, so, um, it should be a great thing. And today, uh, this, this one is even the best because we are honoring one of our own. Uh, Tom Byrne is our grand marshal. So for those of you that don't know Tom, he is a 26-year veteran and head of the, uh, the RTM. He took over for Alexis.
I took over for him.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Thank you. Right? Um, so Tom is Irish heritage. All four of his grandparents came from Ireland. His wife Megan is also Irish-American. Um, he has four children that he raised in Greenwich, two of them who took up Irish occupations of being a fireman. Uh, his daughter is a helicopter pilot for the Navy, and his son does the Greenwich thing of being a money manager. So, uh, please, everybody, uh, come out, wear green, not orange. Remember that. Don't wear orange. And, uh, come out and celebrate with us. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jude. Next, we have two EMAC reports. Is Peter Schweinfirth here? Oh, yes, there you are. Peter Schweinfirth is the chairman of EMAC, which is the Energy Management Advisory Committee, and he's going to be giving us a summary report on their fine work.
Thank you, moderator, and good evening, everyone. So the Board of Selectmen, when they created EMAC, they, they gave us a couple of mandates. And those mandates are to evaluate town building, energy usage, and efficiency, to develop target energy efficiency standards, to set reduction goals, and the strategies to achieve them, to evaluate opportunities for energy conservation and renewable power generation, to make energy-related recommendations on capital improvement projects, and to promote public education to reduce residential and commercial energy consumption. When the committee was first formed, our first major task was to catalog the town's energy consumption, a painstaking and ongoing process because tracking consumption is still a generally novel idea in town. Town tracks costs at the department level, but not below. They don't track energy usage at all. EMAC now tracks roughly 80 buildings, and the portfolio includes all major and minor buildings, including the public schools, libraries, civic centers, the Nathaniel Witherall, and users like the Grif, Island Beach, Jams, the Fleet Department, Holly Hill, wastewater treatment facility in the sewer pump stations, traffic lights, street lights. Our committee recently published its 2023 annual report, which you can find on the Energy Management Advisory Committee webpage on the town's website. In it, you will see that our committee's most important charge is to offer strategies to help the town lower energy spending by 20% to 40% by 2030, and with it, corresponding reduction in energy consumption and emissions. Even as our energy consumption declined 7% last year following two cold winters, our energy spending increased by 17% to at least $8.2 million, driven largely by the spike in natural gas prices, which were up 57% of the last two years. So decreasing our energy consumption and shifting away from the use of fossil fuels provide the town with lower and less volatile energy costs. And of note, the town has very effectively hedged its electricity costs with forward purchases, but has been unable to affordably hedge our gas or liquid fuel usage, which leaves us exposed to much higher prices since the invasion of Ukraine. As I noted, the town has generally not considered energy usage or energy efficiency apart from an LED, uh, lighting replacement program over the last decade. So if the town is going to reduce its consumption in any meaningful way, it will need to go well beyond LED light bulbs and address structural considerations. The best present opportunity to do that is to make energy efficiency a priority in new building projects and also to consider building renovation projects that offer a reasonable payback period, uh, given the essentially permanent nature of the town's ownership of all these buildings. We are disappointed that the replacement of this building, Central Middle School, will have a conventional heating and cooling system, fossil fuel-based, I might add. Forgoing an opportunity to cut energy spend by up to 70% a year and leaving behind many millions of dollars of incentives from Amber Source and the Inflation Reduction Act, which offers a direct pay reimbursement for municipalities for the total system costs of renewable energy technologies, including heat pumps and solar PV systems. The town has over 2.1 million square feet of public building space, of which about 75% is in the public school system. Last year, the public school system accounted for more than 50% of total town energy usage. Given the age of most of our schools, we have a great opportunity to use future new builds and renovations to reduce their operating costs dramatically. However, if we choose older building methods and technologies, then we perpetuate the current high operating costs at the expense of other worthy budget items. It is imperative that we make net zero energy a requirement for future school ed specs and consider modern building approaches, including renewables at the, at the start of the design process for any municipal building project, including the new Dorothy Hamill Rank. You can reach me at peter.shweinfirth@greenhct.org if you have any follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we welcome Javier Elman of District Four, who's also going to give us an EMAC update on his subspecialty.
Good evening. Let's first start with Hamilton Avenue School. We had the pleasure of meeting with Dan Watson and Dominic Franco, who spent a few hours showing us around the mechanical rooms in the school. Dominic, in particular, had a great understanding of the current state of the mechanical systems and was extremely helpful. When looking at the HVAC system, we need to segment the different components into two buckets, below ground and above ground. Below-ground work would be the geothermal well field. Essentially, these are just water pipes that go in the ground and go really deep. Not much can really go wrong with them. When we spoke with Dominic, he mentioned that piping is holding pressure, and we have more than adequate water flow through the array. This is great news. We need to conduct a thermal conductivity test to assess the geothermal heat source and heat sinkability. With the testing data coupled with geothermal modeling software, we can get a good idea on the tonnages we can expect from the well field. The issues with the HVAC system are concentrated above ground. The shortcomings of the above-ground mechanical systems have created an unfair association between geothermal and the HVAC system's subpar performance. The silver lining in a subpar mechanical room design is that it showed me Dominic Franco is more than capable of managing a heat pump system. Dominic had to not only understand the current design, but also had to figure out workarounds. He had to go as far as analyzing the building's automation, the building automation's logic programs so he could understand what's happening. Not all facility personnel have the skill. In purely technical and professional terms, Dominic is the man. The claims the RTM and other body and other town bodies have heard, stating that there is nobody that understands these systems or that can properly manage them, are simply untrue. While at the school, we were told that GPS intended to replace the current system with a combination of air-source heat pumps and a gas boiler, while abandoning the geothermal well field. The air-source heat pumps are a good start, but abandoning the geothermal array would be a very bad mistake. Not only could the geothermal array make the HVAC system more efficient, but it could also downsize the amount of air-source heat pumps we would need to buy and install. Best of all, the redesigning of the medical, uh, the mechanical room would constitute a substantial renovation of the geothermal installation and could possibly open up IRA incentives, which would provide substantial incentives that would lower our cost. Geothermal should be part of this solution at Hamilton Avenue. It would be the environmentally and fiscally responsible decision. Which brings us to Central Middle School. The Building Committee has unfortunately decided against incorporating geothermal into the HVAC design. This decision was taken despite a third-party lifecycle cost analysis done in November that showed that our day-one cost would be $3.00 million cheaper by installing geothermal. It also showed that our lifetime cost to operate the system over 50 years was $3.5 million cheaper. Said in another way, we are going to pay a $3.2 million premium for the privilege of paying an extra $3.5 million in operating costs, all while creating more pollution by burning natural gas on site. This decision is incomprehensible. Personally, I feel outraged and believe so should you. We were told that incorporating geothermal into the design will cost millions more and will delay the project. Additionally, when asked if geothermal wells could be drilled before the building structure, which would avoid delays, we were told that is not possible. In the recent geothermal webinar, we heard from a drilling company, a design engineer, and a school district owner-operator. All presenters were able to attest that geothermal would not impact a construction budget or timelines if properly planned. I will give you this example. In Brooklyn, there is a geothermal installation consisting of 350 wells being installed before three skyscraper apartment buildings are constructed right on top of that geothermal array. One of our neighbors, Mike Richter, is the president of that company. Physics works the same in Greenwich as it does in Brooklyn. If geothermal can be installed with three skyscrapers on top there, we certainly can do it here with our middle school. It is the Building Committee's responsibility to push back on bad advice or guidance we get from consultants. EMAC is more than willing to serve as a resource to the Building Committee in this regard. We, as the RTM, should demand accountability, not only of the Building Committee, but of the BET and the BOE as well. I implore you to get in touch with the members of those bodies, as well as with the Board of Selectmen. We need to demand better decision-making that will impact our budgets decades into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our announcements. First, Selectmen, Camilla, can you do me a favor and prop the door that's back there? It keeps clanking every time it opens, and it's going to drive me insane. Um, so I just want to remind everybody that, uh, if you have a problem with your clicker, just come to the front. If your battery's not working, just come, we'll swap it out. For our members who are participating online, the helpline is 203-992-8383. It seems like you're all very well acquainted with Jenny because she's always on the phone with one of you. Um, because Richard Newman asked so nicely last month, we're going to bring back the moderator's playlist for the two-minute, uh, voting period. Um, and without further ado, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I've notified the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on reports received. There are quite a few consent items. 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Leaving four combined items for the purpose of postponing. Items 4, 8, 11, and 30, we expect those to be postponed to, um, our April meeting with one final item, item 35 is our separate item. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate all of those consent items to our consent calendar. And if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will have no committee reports, and the only thing you are going to hear is what I'm about to say. Ms. Bizano, there are 30 items. If you could just check me to make sure I don't miss any as I'm going through them. Item 1, Jillian Ingram, uh, is being nominated for the, uh, regular member of the Board of Human Services for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item 2, Joey Hassel is being nominated, uh, to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item 3, Mark Jaffe is being, uh, nominated to serve as a regular member of the Board of Human Services for a term expiring June 30th, 2024. Item 5 is Ann Noel Jones Dawson, who's being nominated as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2024. Item 6 is William Baker, who's being, uh, appointed as an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, one word, for a term expiring October 31st, 2026. Item 7 is the nomination of Daniel Izzo to serve as the RTM representative to the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 9 is Christopher Legano, who's being appointed to serve as a member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31st, 2027. Item 10 is James Cobb, who's being appointed as an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31st, 2026. Item 12 is the appointment of Ellen Brennan Galvin, who's being appointed, um, to the Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Council for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 13 is the nomination of Peter Burke, who's being appointed to the Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Council for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 14 is the appointment of Adam Leader, who's serving as a regular member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 15 is the appointment of, uh, Joshua Brown, serving on the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 16 is the appointment of Glenn Kanter, serving on the Labor, Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 17 is the appointment of Kimberly Blank to serve on the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 18 is the appointment of Jessica Adams to serve on the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 19 is the appointment of Gerald Poriselli to serve on the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 20 is the appointment of Kimberly Blank to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 21 is the appointment of Frances Kip Bergweger to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 22 is the appointment of Glenn Kanter to serve as a member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 23 is the appointment of Craig Chapman to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 24 is the appointment of Edward Dedakis to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 25 is the appointment of Aaron Leonard to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 26 is the appointment of Jane Sulich to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 27 is the appointment of Jane Weissbecker to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 28 is the appointment of Greg Zorthian to serve on the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 29, I'm going to be offering a substitute resolution. It is the appointment of Jessica Adams. On the call, it says she was being appointed as a regular member. She's actually an alternate member A2 for the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Item 31 is, uh, the gift of $14,750 to be added to the account A19549010 for feasibility study of the Greenwich Senior Center. Item 32 is $76,000 to be added to various accounts for maintenance of machinery tools, cleaning services, custodial and household supplies, maintenance of general purpose, maintenance of building supplies, and maintenance of machinery tool. Item 33 is, uh, also requested by the Fire Department. It's $25,000 to be appropriated to an account for cleaning services. And our final item is, also by the Fire Department, is, uh, an appropriation for $110,000 to be appropriated into an account for maintenance of auto equipment. And I think that's it. Okay. Let's make sure I got them all. I think I got them all. Is there any objection to any of those items on our consent calendar? Okay, Craig, could you please prepare the vote? Consent calendar items, all of them. And, uh, you will have two minutes. If you could open the voting window, you'll have two minutes to cast your vote. Okay, we're going to close the vote in five minutes. I mean, in five seconds, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, yeah, we don't have results yet. Okay? We are going to close the vote. Okay. Okay, the vote on the consent calendar was 173 in favor, two opposed with three abstentions. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please display the vote? Okay. Next, we have, uh, combined calendars. Uh, we are proposing, or someone's going to propose items 4, 8, 11, and 30 for the purpose of postponing. In order to combine items, we need to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to combined, uh, for voting purposes, items 4, 8, 11, and 30. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a 2/3s majority to pass. Is there any objection to suspending the rules so that we can combine these items for voting purposes? Hearing no objection, the motion to suspend the rules has been adopted upon unanimous consent. May we have someone read the resolution for item 4, which is the first of the items that's being postponed? Ms. Solar, would you like to read the resolution since you're going to be offering the motion to postpone? Allison Solar, Chairwoman of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening, everybody. Get to page 4. Uh, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed to regular member of the Board of Human Services R3 for a term expiring June 30th, 2027, Greg Paletti. I, uh, move to postpone because...
Not yet. We got to get it before us. You're going to be on in a second. Is there a second? Still? Okay. Steve Rubin is out, so stills being my second, and he's doing a very good job of it right now. Thank you. Uh, the resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that consider this item, beginning with Ms. Solar?
He was not able to attend her meeting, so I would like to, uh, make a motion to postpone.
Until April 2024, correct?
Until April 2020.
Does anyone object to that? Okay. That brings us to the next item that we expect to postpone, which is item 8. Mr. McKnight, are you going to offer the remaining three for us? Uh, 8, um, 11, and 30? Or is somebody else going to do that? All right, we'll do the two that you have. We'll find out who missed the third one.
Good evening. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission, R3, for a term expiring March 31st, 2027. See Jefferson Parker.
Great. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. McKnight, would you like to offer your motion to postpone now?
Yes. Skip was not able to attend our meeting on March 5th, so a vote was taken to postpone the nomination to the April meeting.
Great. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Does anyone object to that? Okay. Um, now we have item 11, Mr. Van Oss.
Yes. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission, R1, for a term expiring March 31st, 2027, Michael Foss.
Great. Uh, will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? Resolution has been moved and seconded. And Mr. McKnight, would you like to offer your motion to postpone?
Yes. Mike was not able to attend our meeting March 5th, so a vote was taken to postpone these nominations to the April meeting.
Great. Uh, that motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Any debate on the motion to postpone this nomination to 20, uh, April 2024? None? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bergweger, I think you have Mr. Anderson, item 30 for the Claims Committee. If you could read the resolution.
Uh, good evening. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed as an alternate member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. 2025, Gerald Anderson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer the L and R motion?
Legislative Rules voted to postpone our meeting until April because Jerry was unable to attend.
Great. That being offered on behalf of the committee does not require a second. Any debate or objection to that? Okay. We can adopt the motions to postpone items 4, 8, 11, and 30 upon unanimous consent. If someone objects, we will take a record vote. Is there anyone that objects to postponing those four nominations until April 2024? Hearing none and absent objection, the four combined calendar items have been adopted by unanimous consent to postpone to April 2024. Okay, that brings us to the final item of the evening, which is item 35. The Fair Rent Commission Ordinance. May we have the resolution for that? Kip Bergweger, who is the chairman of the special committee that was assigned that item, will be introducing it for us. If you could read that resolution.
Whereas the Connecticut Legislature has enacted the Fair Rent Commission Act, which requires Greenwich and all other municipalities in the state with a population of 25,000 and more to adopt an ordinance that creates a fair rent commission. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has requested that the town, through its representative town meeting, adopt an ordinance creating a fair rent commission. Now therefore be hereby ordained that the representative town meeting with the town of Greenwich hereby approves the ordinance as it appears below establishing a fair rent commission. It is as it appears in the call.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that consider this item? Mr. Bergweger, would you like to go first with your special committee report?
I think that's a pretty good idea since the special committee is putting this on the call. Good evening, members of the RTM. And guests and special people listening. The Connecticut Fair Rent Commission Act was adopted as an enabling act in 1969 that has been amended numerous times over the decades. Issue of the enactment shows that many of the current provisions that are in item 35 have been in effect for several years. On October 1, 2022, the Connecticut Legislature amended the Fair Rent Commission Act by enabling, by enacting general statutes, which require that all municipalities in the state with a population of 25,000 or more must adopt an ordinance that creates a fair rent commission on or before July 1, 2023. This applies to Greenwich. The statute authorizes a fair rent commission to consider, study, and act upon complaints regarding rental charges on housing accommodations except seasonal rents to eliminate excessive rental charges. Excessive rental charges are those that, considering a number of factors, including 13 factors listed in the statute, are quote harsh and unconscionable, close quote. The state statute authorizes the commission to act where rent is excessive or where a housing accommodation violates any ordinance, statute, or regulation relating to health and safety. The Office of the First Selectmen formed a working group to review the Fair Rent Commission model ordinance and develop a proposed ordinance for the town. The working group comprised the Chair of the Board of Human Services, the Commissioner of the Department of Human Services, an Assistant Town Attorney, an RTM member, a real estate lawyer, a real estate agent, and a landlord and a tenant from different political parties. In June 2023, the Board of Selectmen by unanimous vote adopted the working group's draft of a fair rent ordinance. The RTM did not meet in July or August, so the RTM first considered the proposed ordinance at the September 23 call. At that point, Greenwich was more than two months behind the due date. At the September call, the RTM approved the formation of a Fair Rent Ordinance Special Committee to be comprised of at least two members from each of Health and Human Services, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules Committees. There's also one alternate from Legislative and Rules Committee. The Special Committee plus the Assistant Town Attorney, the Chair of the Board of Human Services, and some other RTM members met several times over the past four months, analyzed issues identified by the members, and negotiated ways to address those issues. One critical issue, for example, was how many members of the commission should attend a meeting and how many votes should be required to rule in favor of the petitioner. The Special Committee approved a meeting of seven members, and for actions impacting the landlord and tenant, a supermajority vote of five would be required. Another concern was that the language of the state statute authorizes the commission to implement its decisions, but does not specify what actions the commission may or should take. This raised the concern that guardrails were needed to limit unreasonable actions. At its February 15, 2024 meeting, the Special Committee by a vote 411 approved the current draft of the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance for submittal to the RTM. The no vote from a delegate from the Land Use Committee, District 12, who voted no because she opposed the supermajority of five votes for a decision. The abstained vote was a delegate from the Legislative and Rules Committee, District 11, who reported that he abstained from voting in favor of the draft ordinance for reasons that including, that included protecting the rights of private property owners to determine a fair and equitable rent for their properties and absolute and total and absolute control as to how their rental units are rented. In addition, he felt that this ordinance could create unintended consequences for landlords and tenants that we could not foresee with the creation of this framework. Greenwich is now the only municipality that has not adopted a fair rent commission ordinance. Today, tonight, we can vote to change that status.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the Special Committee for their work. I know you worked a lot of meetings from September until you turned it in, so I do appreciate all the work that you and your committee did, Kip. I'd now like to recognize James Waters of the Budget Overview Committee to give his report.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee voted 11, 1, 0 to approve item 35 as drafted. No members of BOC were a part of the Special Committee for this item. Mr. Bergweger and Assistant Town Attorney Laura McGeechee were present to provide background information and answer questions. I will not repeat much of the information that Mr. Bergweger just did. We did discuss the Special Committee's vote to approve the modified ordinance by a vote of 411. BOC discussed the potential budget impact of the ordinance on the Legal Department or the Department of Human Services. Commissioner of the Department of Human Services, Demetria Nelson, explained via email, the department will absorb costs in the first year of the proposed ordinance, with the Commissioner acting as mediator in any potential cases that may arise. Depending on case volume, the department may require an additional 0.521 FTE in the FY 2526 budget to manage the operational overhead. This would be for an administrative assistant. Assistant Town Attorney Laura McGeechee explained the incremental workload on her department was unclear, but that in other municipalities, most cases are resolved in mediation. Again, BOC voted 11, 1, 0. No amendments were offered. The District 10 alternate voted no because she felt it was an erosion of personal property rights. Though she understands that the ordinance is required by the state, she believes it will result in increased budgets, given the operational overhead. The 11 BOC members that voted yes highlighted the requirement to adopt an ordinance, the meaningful time and energy that has been spent on the issue, and the six-plus months of delays in improving the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Solar, would you like to go next as the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee?
So I won't repeat a lot of what's already been said. We had two members from the Special Committee, Lindy Lilian and David Snyder, are members of Health and Human Services. So they presented this item to us and explained much of what you've already heard. I will add a few little things. Lindy added that this version that they ended up with is based on the mandate from the state, but that it doesn't do any more than the statute requires. And they explained that the bar is very high to prove that the rent has been increased, causing unconscionable harm to the renter. Our committee discussed whether this was too easy for renters to complain and not have to pay rent. And Lindy shared that once an issue is brought to the commission, the renters still have to pay the current rent, and if they lose their fight to lower an increase, they have to pay the back rent. David, who served on the original, original committee and also on the Special Committee, when he was working on that committee, he shared what he researched earlier, which is that in West Hartford, they have only had two excessive rent complaints go to their Fair Rent Commission in two years. He reminded the committee that when a complaint arises, it first, Kip mentioned this too, it first goes to mediation. That's with the Human Services Commissioner, who's trained in mediation, and issues are almost always resolved there. He noted that the Department of Human Services will track the number of complaints, and they're not planning on adding any staff now. And that after a year, they'll have a better handle on the workload and what might be needed. Also note that part, part of the ordinance includes an annual reporting back to the RTM. A few members of the committee stated that after a year, we could look at any changes needed to the ordinance, but that we should adopt this now. So our vote was 12 0 0.
Thank you. Dan Quigley, Chairman of the Land Use Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow RTM members, the Land Use Committee took up number 35. Laura McGeechee, the Town Attorney with a specialty in land use, was there. I don't want to be redundant with the comments that were already made and the points that were made by her. Everything was covered in full. A lively Q and A followed in land use with several members questioning the mechanisms of the ordinance and what constituted harsh and unconscionable. In particular, a delegate from District 12 spoke at length detailing in her opinion how the proposed ordinance deviated significantly from the state's fair rent toolkit. She was concerned the new Greenwich Fair Rent Ordinance as presented raised questions about fairness and created higher voting thresholds, thresholds, and provided less help to tenants when they might need it most, making it more difficult for the commission to function effectively. She summed up her statement by saying that the tenants who needed fair rent ordinance the most are those that already experienced food and housing insecurity and need our town's help and kindness going forward. Land Use Committee voted 9 to 1 in favor of the ordinance, with District 2 saying, with the two votes who voted no saying there were too many questions left unanswered in the language. And that was also someone who abstained in District 11, questioning the answers to his questions as not being full and adequate.
Thank you. We'll take Kip Bergweger to be followed by Brooks Harris. He'll give his District 10 district report. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of the Legislative Rules Committee.
The Legislative Rules Committee met last Monday night on March 4. All districts were represented by members present in person or by Zoom. We also had Laura McGeechee, the Assistant Town Attorney, to help. And her, she's a great help because she had worked with the Board of Selectmen Working Group and the Fair Rent Commission Special Committee, and she has a deep and full understanding of the matter and explained the history of the town's effort to establish a fair rent commission. Glenn Kaner from District 12 and I had been involved with the Special Committee, and we joined with Ms. McGeechee to explain the statutory requirements of the ordinance, where municipalities were afforded some leeway in tailoring the ordinance, and the reasoning behind some of the amendments proposed. Ms. McGeechee pointed out that Greenwich is now the only town with a population over 25,000 that is not in compliance with the state statutes. The delegate from District 1 moved to strike the words and the number of occupants from section 2-138, which is a list of all the items that the, in the statute that the commission is to consider, and that was the number of occupants in the, in the, the housing, housing accommodation. He thought that it was just an amendment by the Board of Selectmen Special Committee. The change would have removed a factor that the state statutes requires the commission to consider, and therefore the motion was rejected with a vote of 2, 10, and 0, with Districts 1 and 12 voting yes. The delegate from District 10 made a motion to amend section 2-137 to limit the commission's jurisdiction to housing accommodations that contain five units or more. The Chair, that was me, ruled that the motion was out of legal order and is in conflict with the state statutes, which applies to all residential properties regardless of the number of units. The District, the delegate appealed my ruling, which was voted down 2-10 0. The delegate from District 10 also argued that the state statute was unconstitutional because one legislative body cannot tell another legislative body how to vote, although no vote was taken on that. Ms. McGeechee noted a Scrivener's error that needs to be corrected. I will make an emotion at the appropriate time to do that direction. The L and R Committee voted to approve item 25 as amended on both legal order and the merits with a vote of 9, 3, 0. The member from District 6 excused herself and her alternate voted in her stead. Districts 3, 7, and 10 voted no on legal order because they questioned the constitutionality of the underlying statute. The same districts voted no on the merits, with District 3 reasoning that the ordinance comprises, compromises landlords, District 7 out of concern for the constitutionality of the ordinance, and District 10 because he believes it is a violation of local control by the state. And I'm now prepared to make the motion.
Let's hear Mr. Harris's report. You just scoot over there and then we'll get you in a second. Okay, Mr. Bergweger for the Scrivener's error. Okay, Brooks Harris, Chairman of District 10.
Thank you. I'm reporting for District 10 this month because we're going to be proposing an amendment to this resolution. Before, there was considerable concern in District 10 regarding this regulation, but before we got into questions about the specifics, we wanted to be clear that we wanted to thank Kip and the commission for the hard work they did, and we recognize that this is not easy. And so, you know, we started with that. Members questioned whether the state had the authority to force us to approve a local ordinance. Many had heard this claim and thought this needed to be clarified. People were concerned members may vote on this solely because they thought we had to and not on the merits of the proposal, and they thought this was wrong. Kip indicated that while the state could not compel us to pass this ordinance, they could impose penalties on us if we did not. Currently, there are no penalties. Some members who did not like this idea wanted to understand the magnitude of the penalties before acceding to the state's demands. Many were still upset at instances of the state overriding local rules, such as giving up zoning control under State Statute 830G, and did not want to be coerced into supporting a policy they felt was bad. Some members were concerned because when other jurisdictions imposed rent controls, it often had unintended effect of reducing the supply of rental units, making it difficult and more expensive for people experiencing lessness to find suitable housing in our town. Lindy indicated, well, I should have mentioned Kip Bergweger from L and R and Lindy Lilian joined us to explain this. Okay. Lindy indicated that the experience of other cities which implemented this was that only a limited number of cases came up each year, and most of these were settled by arbitration. One member questioned whether a bad ordinance could be made better by showing it will only be used occasionally. We debated whether the commission should have some lower boundary that they could impose for rent. It was proposed that rent should not be decreased below the current level adjusted for inflation. It was noted that the current regulation does not prevent any reduction, including theoretically a reduction to a dollar per month. Mr. Bergweger responded that approval of- Mr. Bergweger responded that approval of five commissioners was required for any reduction, and it was unlikely that any commissioner would be so unreasonable. Some members felt limited, limiting decreases to the current level was unfair because if the property declined, a reduction in rent could be warranted below the rate of inflation. Other members countered that the market accounted for this because the market rate would be reduced and the landlord would have to meet the lower level. Others worried that the commissioners may misread this provision and use it to argue that the maximum increase a tenant should pay is the rate of inflation. After much debate, this provision was withdrawn. The district next took up the idea of requiring the number of landlords and tenants on the commission to be increased from one to two each. It was noted that to have a quorum, the commission must have present at least one landlord and one tenant, and that by increasing this number, it was more likely a quorum would be achieved. It was also noted that this would allow the commission to have more members with, quote, "skin in the game" on both sides. This proposal passed 16-1-0 with one dissenting because they argued this was unnecessary. I'll be offering this amendment on behalf of D 10 at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bergweger, why don't you come and offer your Scrivener's error? To give everybody a lay of the land here, we have three potential motions to amend Item 10. The Scrivener's error is not one of them, though.
Um, thank you.
Sorry, 35.
Yeah. One thing I just want to note, this is, this ordinance is not a rent control ordinance. So when people refer to rent control, it's not really the way we understand rent control. This is just, and most of these, the, and all the other communities in Connecticut, most of the complaints are resolved by mediation, and the Director of Human Services has been trained to be, trained in mediation. Anyway, the motion to correct the Scrivener's error, it's in Section 2-142 of the commission. In Section 1-142 of the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance, change the reverence, reference in the third line from Section 6-1, I'm sorry, Section 2-136 to Section 2-141. And L and R voted unanimously to approve that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone object to that very minor Scrivener's error correction? That can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Okay. Upon unanimous consent, that Scrivener's error has been adopted and changed. Okay, now, we have three proposed motions to Item 35. One is coming from District 10, which is in Section 2-136. And then, as I understand it, Ms. Alvarez of District 12 intends to offer an individual motion in that same section. Is that correct? Okay. I need to get clarification from you. Could you come down to the podium, please? Because I have to ask you a question before I figure out which direction we're going in. Francia Alvarez, member of District 12, who will be offering potentially some motions as an individual. Ms. Alvarez, is your intention to delete, well, tell me what you are planning on offering for 136 only, not the other one.
To withdraw that.
To, I'm sorry?
To delete or withdraw, I'm not sure which term you want.
So you, in your email, because I just need to be very clear, you would like to delete the entire paragraph, or you would like to revert to what it appeared in the original text that was submitted in September?
Revert back to the original text as it was in September.
Okay. If that is your intention, and we'll get to that in a second, then District 10's motion is going to go first because if indeed your motion came to the floor and it passed, then we would have then deleted a paragraph or reverted it, and it would impact District 10's ability to offer their motion. So District 10 will go first. We'll see how that goes, and then we'll take up yours. So don't go too far. Brooks Harris with the motion from District 10.
Thank you. District 10 moves to change Section 2-136, Creation of Fair Rent Commission, Section B, in the second sentence, changing from, "Of the seven regular members, at least one shall be a landlord or professional property manager, and at least one shall be a tenant", to, "Of the seven regular members, at least two shall be landlord or professional property manager, and at least two shall be a tenant." Thank you.
Okay. That motion being offered on behalf of a district does not require a second. Mr. Harris, do you have anything else that you would like to offer on that motion? Okay. We only have one individual who signed up to speak on this, Lindy Lillian. Is she here? Okay. Lindy Lillian of District 5, and I believe she also served on the special committee.
Thank you. The, I think Patty Roberts would be making this argument against, but she did not sign up for this. So I'm making it based on her experiences. She has found it very difficult to find even one landlord who's willing to sit on this commission. It's required that there be one landlord or property manager and one tenant as regular members as drafted, as well as one landlord or property manager and one tenant as part of the three alternates. So to even put together this commission, you'll have to have two to begin with. To add a third is extremely onerous and, I believe, unnecessary because you're always going to have those viewpoints represented if there is a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on this item? Otherwise, I'm going to move to a vote. Okay. There was no one else that signed up. Okay, does everyone understand what District 10 is offering? They would like to change the number of property owners or property managers and landlords from one to two, as well as tenants from one to two on the commission. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? And I think it says District 10, you know, Section 2136B. Okay. So this is the District 10 motion to amend Section 2136B in the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance. If you are in favor of the proposed change by District 10, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. You'll have two minutes on the timer. And you can open the vote now, Craig. Okay, you have about five seconds. Okay, Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, I have the result of the vote on District 10's motion to amend. Those in favor, 57; opposed, 119; abstaining, 2. That motion has failed. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. Ms. Alvarez, you have two motions. We're going to start with your first motion. And I need you to, well, Francia Alvarez, member of District 12. If you could just read your motion, and then I'll call for a second.
Okay. On March 9th, I-
No, 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 no. I need you to just read your motion. So what is your motion?
My motion is to withdraw Section 2136, Creation of Fair Rent Commission.
Okay, I don't think you want to withdraw it.
I want to withdraw what I had submitted.
You haven't submitted anything yet. You are on the floor, and you are about to make a motion. I need to know the exact language of what you are proposing. So what are you proposing to do with Section 2136B?
I'm proposing that Section 2136B, Creation of the Fair Rent Commission, stays the way that it is, in the original ordinance that was presented.
Okay. So, and the original ordinance being the, the language that was in September of 2023?
Yes.
Okay, do you have that language?
I do. I do.
Okay, if you could read that, that would be great.
B, the commission shall consist of seven regular members and three alternates, all of whom shall be-
No, 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 Ms. Alvarez, the original language from 2023, the original language has it as five members.
I didn't change that part, though.
So you are, you were stating that you would like to revert back, wait, revert back to the original language. The original language is what came before us in September of 2023.
No, I want to go back to what was presented in the Explanos.
I don't know what was presented in the Explanos, so let's all look together.
I have it here.
Okay. What, why don't you read, you realize that you've just read something that says seven members, which has, the, the current legislation before us already has seven members?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you finish reading, and I'll just try and figure out where the change is?
B, the commission shall consist of seven regular members and three alternates, all of whom shall be electors of the town of Greenwich. Of the seven regular members, at least one shall be a landlord or professional property manager, and at least one shall be a tenant. Of the three alternates, at least one shall be a landlord or professional property manager, and one shall be a tenant. The Director of Human Services shall serve without vote as an ex officio member of the commission. A quorum shall consist of five voting members or seated alternates, provided there is a minimum of one landlord or professional property manager and one tenant seated for any decision. The regular members and alternates of the commission shall serve without compensation.
Correct, but that's currently what's before us. So what's your change?
I, I, I don't want to make a change. I, that was why I, that was why I contacted you, to tell you that I had-
No, your email, I mean, we don't have to debate this, but-
I don't want to make a change.
The, the, the email I have is, "I am proposing that Section 2-136 be returned to the text that appeared in the original Greenwich Fair Rent Ordinance."
I'm-
Okay, but you don't have to withdraw anything because you haven't put it before us yet. So it sounds like you do not have any motion right now on this item.
No.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then we're going to go to the second motion that you do have. I, correct? You have a second motion that you would like to offer?
Yes, I do.
In Section, I forget what section that is. Is it 2140?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you offer those, then?
Okay. Thank you. Here we go.
And in, for those following along, this is on page 12 and page 13 in the call, Section 2140.
So my motion is to change Items, Section 2140, Orders and Repairs. And it reads, A, if the commission determines after a hearing based upon the affirmative vote of at least five, I would like to change that to four regular members and/or seated alternates. That the rental charge or proposed increase in the rental charge for any housing accommodation is so excessive, based on the standards and criteria set forth in 2-138, Section A and B of this chapter, as to be harsh and unconscionable. It may order that the rent be limited to such an amount as it determines to be fair and equitable, effective the month of which the tenant filed the complaint. Do you want me to read the whole thing, or that's enough? Okay.
I think we get the idea. You, where the two references are to five members, affirmative votes of five members, you are requesting that that be changed to four.
Yes.
Is that correct? So it's in Section A-
And B.
And B. Okay. Is there a second to that? Okay. That motion being moved and seconded is now before us, and we can debate that. Let's see if anyone has signed up for this one. Ms. Alvarez, would you like to, as the proponent of that?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Francia Alvarez. I'm on the Land Use Committee, and I'm on the special, the Fair Rent Special Committee, and I'm from D 12. I've submitted a motion to amend Item Number 35, the Fair Rent Commission Special Committee, Section 2-140, Orders and Repairs, A and B. Fair rent commissions are empowered to stop or delay an unconscionable rent increase, and also to limit rent to a fair level when there are health or safety violations. A state fair rent model was provided to the town for guidance. Last May, the Greenwich Board of Selectmen presented the ordinance. A fair rent housing special committee was formed, yet the ordinance did not always follow the model. Section 2-140A, Orders and B, Repairs, require at least five out of seven members for an affirmative vote. Fair rent commissions are empowered to stop or delay an unconscionable rent increase, and also to limit rent to a fair level when there are health or safety violations. Neither the state or the Greenwich Board of Selectmen indicated the number of members required for a vote. Unfortunately, the Fair Rent Special Committee chose to set the bar too high, requiring five affirmative votes out of seven. Also, a meeting could be held even if only five members attended. If five votes are required to determine whether a rent increase is excessive, then 100% of the quorum would be required. I'm asking you to please vote to change Article 18, Section 2140, Orders, Repairs, in A and B. The Fair Rent Committee set the bar too high to be fair and effective. By asking for a higher threshold for action, we need to reset requirements to a four affirmative votes. As we said earlier, as was said earlier in the evening, it is the residents who are experiencing food and rent insecurity that need these kinds of changes the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks Harris is our only other speaker. Mr. Harris passes. Okay. Does anyone else want to address this? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? Let's just explain where we're going with this. Ms. Alvarez is making a motion in Orders and Repairs, Section 2140, to change the threshold of the affirmative votes from five to four in both Section A and Section B. Okay? If you're in favor of that change, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, you would vote no. So this is the Alvarez motion to amend Section 2140A and B in the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance. You'll have two minutes to cast your vote. Craig, could you please open the, the voting record, please? You have about 10 seconds. Okay, we're going to close the vote. Craig, can you please, please close the vote? Okay. The vote on the Alvarez motion to change the threshold from five to four, those in favor, 101; opposed, 77; abstaining, 2. That motion has carried. Okay, that now brings us to, oh, Craig, I'm sorry, can you please show the vote? There you go. Okay. That now brings us to general debate on Item 35. It would be as amended at this point. Let me see who has signed up to speak. Okay. Is Patty Roberts here? Patty Roberts, who is Chair of the Board of Human Services now? Have I got that right? Oh, good.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight for the, for the creation of the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance in Greenwich. As you've heard and read, it's a very complicated topic, one that the working committee spent a fair amount of time, and I would say that I sat in on every special committee meeting except for one. And no one likes the state to tell you what to do. So I'm the first to say, I'm sorry that it moved forward, but I think it's the right thing. And I think that the drafted ordinance, ordinance with the amendments that have been approved reflects the town values. This is not a rent control. A rent control indicates that, that the commission would say, "Your rent can't go above that." That is not the case. You know, they're going to be benchmarking against comparable properties. The rents could go up 40%, and then the tenant, if it goes up 70%, has a, has an avenue to talk to somebody. And so I think from my perspective, I'm happy that we're at this stage. I think Greenwich will be a better place for having a mechanism for tenants and landlords to get together. You know, I think it's not surprising that most of these are resolved in mediation. You get two people together, they make a compromise, and then you move on. And so I just urge you to approve this. It, it is the law, but it's also the right thing to do. Thank you.
Is Ryan Brumberg here? Okay, thank you. David Snyder? District 6, my home district.
I was, hello. I was a part of the first committee that Patty led, and then I was also a part of the special committee that KIP led. I'm not an attorney, and therefore drafting ordinances isn't in my wheelhouse. And so I saw my role as to reach out to the other towns, over 25,000 people, and find out what the lived experience of the Fair Rent Commission was. Like what, what, what's really happening on the ground in these other towns. And there was one big common denominator. A vast majority of the inquiries were informational in nature, and people would come, they'd learn what their rights are and what they can do about it, and that they were dealt with in that initial interaction with the department. So those that came with a complaint were mediated quickly and did not require a commission hearing. So on Friday, I checked, I wanted to just do a, I, I was calling comparable towns to Greenwich, like, like West Haven and, and towns that have similar demographic composition. And so on Friday, I decided to do Norwalk, which is significantly bigger than us. It's half again, larger in terms of population. And so out of a population of 94,000 people in Norwalk, they have 38,000 housing units, and of those, 15,000 are rental occupied. Compared with Greenwich, with a population of 64,000, we have 6,400 housing units, and of those, 2,600 are rental occupied. And so it's an apples and oranges comparison, but I figured Norwalk's going to have a lot of heavier usage of the Fair Rent Commission. And so I spoke with Carlos Duke, who is an employee of the Human Services Department in Norwalk, and leads the Fair Rent Commission on behalf of the town. And he told me, what he told me completely corresponds with the other towns. And so here are the numbers from, from Carlos. In 2023, 426 individuals and families came to the Fair Rent Commission asking for information. And so they were given, they had an interaction with the town, they were told their rights, and they were dealt with. Of those, only 21 cases were filed, and none of them went to a commission hearing. Every one of them was mediated. And so in fact, the commission hasn't heard a case for over 15 months in Norwalk. They, this May, they have two cases scheduled, but those cases are both actively in mediation right now. And so I do not anticipate that we'll be flooded with complaints and inundated with hearings. But I do anticipate that we are establishing a service for tenants to come and get information about their rights and to be heard. Is that so bad? I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance.
Brooks Harris, passing. Francia Alvarez, passing. Vinay Pandey? Passing, you're here. Are you, you signed up to speak, would you like to?
Hello. I oppose passage of this ordinance in its current form, though I strongly support the setting up of a fair rent commission if its intention is indeed what we discussed today, or most of the participants said, which is to, to approach the problem through mediation. I'll make three quick points. The first, I see issues around the actual language in the draft, in the draft that's before you. Let's take one example. The Section 2138, please turn to subsection A9. Okay? So, in this section, forgive me. In this section, 2-138, which is Determination of Excessive Rent, subsection A says, "In determining whether a rental charge or a proposed increase in a rental charge is so excessive, with due regard to all the circumstances, to be harsh, unconscionable, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." One of the considerations, number nine, is income and availability. The documented income and assets of the petitioner and other occupants, and the availability of alternative accommodations. I am struggling with how the income of a tenant is relevant in the determination of a rent of a property that may be too large for his income, you know, too small. I mean, if I go to Satby's and I see a Picasso on auction, and I say, "I have $1,000 in my pocket, I mean, why is your reserve price, you know, $1 million?" That is not a relevant consideration. So we were told by the, the lady from, one of the lady, the lady who helped draft this, that, "No, no, no, that was not the intention. The intention was to encourage mediation in case a tenant lost his job, you know, during the term of the tenancy." Yeah, that's reasonable. But another member of the committee that wrote this, who was on our, on our district, said, "No, no, that was not the intention at all." So what was it? And if it is an issue of mediation, does it belong in Section 2-138? And if the intention is indeed to strive for mediation, why don't we have a section that says mediation? Right, if that is really what we care about? There are other things like this, I won't bore you with it, but of the list of things that are, you know, are relevant, one thing that is not mentioned is the current rate of interest on mortgage loans and the availability of loans. I don't know how closely you've been tracking the, the housing loan market, especially for builders. It has ceased to exist. Right? Point two. I am concerned that not enough has, consideration has been given to the complexity, and maybe even the staff needs, potentially. Yeah, I, I have heard that, you know, there's been no problem in Norwalk, but these statutes, these ordinances stay on the books for, you know, for a long, long time, and they're difficult to amend, which is our experience. So how are you going to look at comparables to determine fair rent? One proposal is to look at the MLS. How many of us know how to handle an MLS? I suspect the vast majority of smaller homes are private, you know, involve private negotiations of rent. Yes, there is data on the price of a home, and yes, there is data on, you know, on who has rented. Who is going to go through those reams and reams and reams of paper if you do come to a point where you had to determine what a comparable is? Okay, so I have been consulting real estate agents, lawyers, and they said, "Are you mad? I mean, how is this going to be done?" So if no one shows up, you know, why do we have a fair rent commission? Right, if the whole point is no one complains, no one comes, why do we need it? If the point is to actually offer one-third of the residents of Greenwich, who are tenant families, you know, a way to, to get a fair hearing, which they don't have currently, and also to landlords who are good people who get stuck with bad tenants, also have a way to, you know, to, to achieve a decent result, you know, let's draft this carefully and let's think it through. Point three, you know, I, I agree with, and I think the underlying intention of, of Greenwich at least, I don't know about the other jurisdictions, is to go to mediation, and that's a good one, all right? That's a very, very good intention. But I think there may be better ways to achieve, you know, the end we are all seeking. One concern I have is there are, there is no teeth in this ordinance. You can't levy a fine, we can't do very much. We have to think of appropriate things, you know, short of levying penalties, I don't know if we can do that legally, but there has to be an appropriate framework, for example, red flagging habitual offenders. I'll give you an example. The most frequent disputes, so I've been a landlord for many years, I've been a tenant, you know, for some. I've been a landlord for 35 years in London DC here, and I've been a tenant in London DC and here. The, most of the arguments are over the deposit. Okay, so at the end of the term, a bad landlord won't give you the deposit back. He'll say, "Oh, you scratched the, you know, you dug, you know, holes in the wall, and you, you scraped the paint, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera," you know, silly things. What I've discovered recently as a landlord is tenants also misuse this. So if you don't want to, if you've made a mess in the house and you don't want your deposit to be taken away, you just don't pay the last month's or the last two months' rent. You know what it takes to recover those two months' rent in the housing courts? And are you aware that if you're over age, I think 62, you put only one month's rent as deposit? Right? Tenants don't pay the last month's rent. So the landlord has no right. So I think the, you know, the smarter way to handle things like this, if you don't have teeth, is red flagging landlords who are habitual offenders and red flagging tenants who are habitual offenders. How you define that obviously is up to, you know, people to discuss. But I think there are ways to make this much more, you know, useful and to achieve the end we're all seeking. Okay, thanks for your attention.
And our final speaker is Lyndi Lillian.
Okay, I apologize, I'm just doing this based on your comments, thank you. And I would suggest you talk to Patty Roberts about potentially being on the commission. I think you'd be a great addition. Also, just, just for everybody's clarification, anyone was welcome to attend these special committee meetings. They were public, the, there's a bunch of stuff in the public record, emails going back and forth, and others did attend. Several people who were landlords, et cetera. So anyone is welcome to attend these special committee meetings and make their points known. You had mentioned, sorry, 2-1389, income and availability, and that that didn't seem appropriate as a factor to consider. We actually did discuss that in the special committee meetings, and it is in fact required by the state-enabling statute. The statute at 7-148C, and sorry to get kind of down in the weeds on this statutory stuff, but just hoping this will help clarify. Section 7148C of the state statute provides the standard. "Whether a rental charge or a proposed increase in a rental charge is so excessive, with due regard to all the circumstances, as to be harsh and unconscionable." So that's the standard, the overarching standard. Then there are 13 factors that the commission shall consider. Our draft ordinance pretty much tracks these 13 factors with a little bit of additional clarification. The standard excessive, unless unreasonable or unconscionable, shock the conscience, et cetera, however lawyers interpret that, and they do interpret those terms quite often, that doesn't change. The factors just become part of the totality of the circumstances that the commission can look at. We also added a catch-all factor for anything that might not have been part of these 13. So anything the landlord or the tenant bring in that isn't covered under these, the commission has to consider it if it's relevant. So where an income, and I don't know what Hartford's intent was with this statute, you know, they throw together a lot of different views. What makes it in the final statute is just a whole amalgamation of things. It may not be any one person's ability to say what the intent was. And, but the way I look at it would be like, where would the income be relevant? When you're looking at, say, a big property manager like an Avalon, and maybe a tenant who has limited English skills? You just want to know, who are you dealing with? Who are these parties? So hopefully that helps. And penalties are also part of this enabling statute. The state statute 7-148F provides for the penalties that we ended up providing for in the draft ordinance. So I would encourage you all to vote yes on it, and I think it'll be a good thing for Greenwich.
Okay, we are ready for our final vote of the evening, which is Item 35 as amended. Craig, could you please prepare the? Okay, if you are in favor of the Fair Rent Commission Ordinance as amended, that was Francie Alvarez's change that we adopted from five to four, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. The two-minute window, Craig, could you open the window, please? Two-minute window's open. All right, wait, wait, don't turn in your clickers. Apparently people are saying that their clickers aren't working. So go back to your seat, okay? Do not turn in your clickers. Okay. Who's, are clickers working online? Is that what we're getting online? Is anyone in the room, does anyone have a clicker that's working here? Are all those people online? Okay, so it appears that it's working online, all the people online are working. I don't know why yours aren't working, but we have cards. So we're just going to go old school and hand out cards, and you will do it for cards. Oh, wait, wait, Craig has allegedly, are you going to try and fix it? All right, we're going to try something, okay? We're going to turn it off, and then we're going to turn it on. And we're not going to kick it or anything, because usually at home, kicking things when they don't work helps. But bear with us, do not leave, and if the clickers aren't working, we'll just go to cards. Well, how can it be working? Is it? Oh, he's not sharing the screen, apparently. All right. Now try it. Okay? Is it working? Do not come and turn them in. I don't want to see anyone up at the tables, okay? Sit in your seats. It's a very precarious situation. We have one person who needs a battery change, so we're just going to keep the vote open until the battery gets changed. Okay, Dan, can you turn off the music? Craig, can you please close the vote?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, the vote on Item 35, the Fair Rent Commission as amended, is 128 in favor, 41 opposed with six amendments. That item is carried. The vote you are going to see up there is going to only have 40 noes, because we have one paper vote that we will add. So that is the vote, and then you're going to amend it to include the one paper vote that we have. There being no further business, this meeting stands adjourned. I look forward to seeing you all in April.